Hey everyone, aloha and welcome to the Thursday, November 9th, meeting of the Ko'ala Loa Neighborhood Board. For rules of speaking, to ensure that maximum opportunity for all attendees to be heard, the following guidelines will apply. Those joining the meeting, I'm going to remind you to mute their microphones. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to type their question in the chat box or box or raise their hand using the raise stand function in the online meeting platform, which is indicated by a hand or unmute yourself. At the appropriate time is indicated by the chair. If accessing the meeting using your phone and you have a comment, please indicate that by pressing the star nine symbol. This will show the chair that the person from the number wishes to speak. To mute and unmute, press the star six. Please wait until recognized by the chair to begin. All comments, concerns, or questions shall be two minutes or less. Please kokoa to help all attendees have the opportunity to hear the presentation and comments. Please place your device on mute until you would like to speak and when you are recognized by the chair. Note, the board may take action on the agenda on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law, HR 92. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote of this nine-member body in the board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items not added cannot be added if they are of major importance and will affect the significant number of people. With that, we will go into our monthly reports. We will start with HFD. Do we have anyone from HFD? Please proceed with your report.
Okay, will you hear me clear?
Yeah, please proceed.
Captain Rhinokey from the Honolulu Fire Station, and I'm going to give you the monthly stats for October for the Kaua, Kaula, and Kahuku Fire Stations combined. So for October, we had one nuisance fire, one cooking fire, three activated alarms with no fire, responded to forty-two medical alarms, six motor vehicles, and three motorcycles. I'll also give you November's fire safety tip. So for November, we're emphasizing holiday cooking safety. But we want everyone to be safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is a peak day for fires at homes. It's more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve rank second and third. So we recommend that you stay in the kitchen and focus on your cooking. Do not leave the stove unattended. Stay at home and cook in your turkey. Do not leave your residence and leave the turkey in the oven. Check on it frequently. And we also recommend, if you want to buy a fried turkey, to purchase one from a grocery store, restaurant, or use an air fryer. The HFD prefers you not to use turkey oil fryers. Proven not safe because of the large amounts of oil and high temperatures, which can cause devastating burns. With that, do you have any questions or concerns?
Okay, go ahead.
I have a question. I am a resident of Honolulu. And I was just wondering, I live... You go down Honolulu Valley Road to where it meets with the Ko'ala Road, and there is a fire hydrant there. But in the six years that we've been there, I have really never seen them test. And my question with the fire, the drought that we're having and everything is, is there a schedule where we know that these fire hydrants that are back in our rural areas have been tested?
I believe Board of Water has a running schedule where they test and service every fire hydrant. I'm not really sure how often it's done. But we're able to go there ourselves and check them. Just hook up our truck to it and we can check its pressure and flow rate. I can check in to see how often Board of Water services hydrants on a regular basis for you.
Great, thank you. And maybe they could let you know if there are any that are not operational.
Yeah, we get a report from our dispatch from Board of Water when any hydrant goes unoperational and we can't use it, so we know, and it's on our computer-based system.
And is that addressed in a timely fashion? And I ask only because Honolulu has not had an emergency siren for a year and a half. So I'm a little bit worried when I hear that something doesn't work and especially things that are critical like the fire hydrants. So if you were to get a report that anything wasn't working, is that responded to in a very timely manner?
Yes, I believe Board of Water knows, they will let HFD know immediately.
Thank you, mahalo.
Any other questions for board members? Any other questions, remember from the community in person? Do we have any questions? Sorry, go ahead, Ken.
If there's a... Something happens on the road and then people drive down and it's tolls and they're going to turn around and come all the way back this way. Someone brought up the thing, if something happens, can they let the fire department know? Like in Kahuku, Kaula, Kaua. And then they can go out and put a sign, you know? Because then people drive all the way down there and they're going to turn around and come all the way back. It was brought up before, but maybe the fire stations, if they are contacted and they can go up and put the sign.
Did you catch that?
Yes, yeah. Right now, we use this city app on my cellphone and it'll pretty much give you any of those road closures. Pretty, pretty... It's pretty good. I use it just every morning before I come to work just to see if I can make it. I live in Wailea. So I think getting that city app would be the best, the best thing for each individual to have on his phone. I think it's called City Alerts.
I have another question. If there is a fire in Ko'ala Loa that's serious, would you alert through the sirens that we typically use for tsunamis? To let people know, or how would people know?
Yes, I believe because of recent events through the DEM, Department of Emergency Management, they have a system where they'll set off the alarms for large wildfires, tsunamis, hurricanes, anything of concern. It's through the Department of Emergency Management. And they work directly with our community.
Okay, so they would get that information from the fire department and then they would turn on the sirens?
Yes, from our dispatch control center.
So that's definitely something that's supposed to happen now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Do you have any other questions from members of the community online? Okay, here in Inseanum, thank you very much, Captain Alki, we'll see you in January.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, moving on to HPD. Please proceed with your report.
Captain Agu from the Honolulu Police Department. I have the statistics for Ko'ala Loa for October 2023. There were four motor vehicle thefts compared to three the previous month. There were three burglaries compared to two the previous month. There were nine general thefts compared to eleven the previous month. There was one UEMV or car break-in compared to three the previous month. And there was one robbery compared to zero the previous month. And I'll take any questions if there are any.
Any questions from board members? Any questions from people in the community?
Yeah, the intersection of Cam Highway, and I don't know the name of the street where you turn to go into BYU and McDonald's in Laie. When we're sitting on Cam Highway trying to make a left turn into that street, people are just lying by you on the shoulder, the right shoulder. The other day, I witnessed four vehicles pass one that was trying to make a left turn. That's a very, very dangerous intersection, and I never, ever seen police officers monitoring that area. So it can't be looked into?
Did you catch that?
Yeah, I did. We'll definitely bring it up and post it in our lineup. Like a general timeframe or just all hours of the day?
Well, it's all day, but when traffic is busy, like in the afternoon.
School time, before school, after school?
After school and on like maybe four, five o'clock when people are coming home. Yeah, it's bad.
Okay.
But it's happened in the morning too.
I have a question. I was driving along Cam Highway this afternoon and there were probably about ten youth. I don't know if they just get off of a bus or what, but they were high school age kids. And they started throwing rocks at cars. What should we do? Call you?
Yeah, definitely, should call 911 immediately. It can be an anonymous caller, but anything like that, criminal property damage, possible injuries, it's definitely a call to 911 and we try to get somebody over there right away, yeah.
Yeah. This was between 711 and Hotula Elementary or between Kuna Road and 711. Yeah. Okay, thank you, officer.
Thank you. Any other questions for members of the public in person? Okay, we'll go to members of the public online. I see your hand up, Casey, please proceed with your question.
Yes, thank you, I apologize, my computer went off a little. Did you talk about the... A couple months ago, there was a murder in Kahuku and we saw in the paper that there was someone taken in for that. Thank you. Are you allowed to say if that was somebody that was homeless or not? Are you allowed to talk about that?
So if it's an ongoing case, that case would be with the homicide or the CID Criminal Investigation Division. So they, as far as what's released to the public, that's generally all they're going to give, yeah? Because there's going to be possibly court proceedings, there's going to be, there's more follow-ups to do. So it's not... It's not just open source knowledge for passing around, yeah? But they can, you can refer to the HonoluluPD.org page.
Okay.
And then they can give, they have some, so whatever is put out in the paper is generally already vetted through our Criminal Investigation Division. And then they're going to, that's basically the statement that they're going to give at that time. So there was someone arrested. I kind of remember the case, yeah? Unfortunately, it does happen way more often than we tend to want it to happen. But we're not going to go beyond any information that's already been passed out, yeah?
So there's no way we can find out if it's a homeless population or not?
Well, not right now. Like I said, we wouldn't want to speculate on any of that because the facts, if it is a court proceeding, most of the facts should come out in court, yeah?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Any other persons online would like to ask a question? Right, here in Inseanum, thank you very much.
Thank you, happy Veterans Day.
Thank you.
Okay, um, United States Army.
You're in person, right ahead.
Good evening, I'm Sergeant First Class Gray, representing the 25th Division Statement Brigade in US Army. First thing I want to talk about is the November Job Fair. Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on the 28th of November at the Airport Honolulu Hotel. Starts at 8:30 and it goes until 2:00 PM. It's open to the public. They're going to have job offers and provisional hiring that day. So if you want, you can go ahead of time onto HIMWR.com or you can come in person, walk-ins are welcome. Bring two references, a proof of ID, social security card, a resume, or an application if you've gone online and have it already. Next thing I want to talk about with you for a couple minutes is JPMRC, the Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center. That's the big exercise that's been going on from the 1st of November and tomorrow is actually the last day of that. Now, this has been in coordination with Joint Pacific Multi-Readiness, Multinational Readiness Center and the 196th Infantry Brigade. It's been here on Oahu as well as Hawaii Island. Residents, even though the exercise is set to be over tomorrow, residents still may see some troops traveling to and from training areas. This exercise has been critical to the United States military to prepare and validate 25th Infantry Division's ability to deploy fight and win in combat operations across the Indo-Pacific if required. Now, if you do have any questions or require additional information, you can contact 808-656-3487. Again, I want to just touch on that JPMRC is critical to our military readiness and that we appreciate the community's understanding and patience. Again, some intermittent military vehicle convoys, potentially with six or more vehicles, may be on the roads, traveling between training areas here on Oahu. The exact times in route will vary depending on the training scenario. Military units are making every effort available to mitigate those convoys and conduct them at times that won't significantly impact residents and communities. Also, the 25th Infantry Division appreciates the community's understanding and continued support for local military training. Along with Operation Pathways, JPMRC 2401 facilitates unit readiness in the region and allows commanders to train their forces in realistic environments and conditions where they are most likely to campaign and be employed in the event of a crisis or conflict. Want to touch briefly on the wildfire suppression efforts just for the community's awareness. The US Army provided air support to the Honolulu Fire Department with a UH-60 Blackhawk and a CH-47 Chinook helicopter for water bucket drops to help contain the Mililani Mauka Wildland Fire over the course of three days. That was from the 30th of October through the 1st of November. Personnel from the Army Fire Team also worked closely on site with the Incident Command to help direct water drops with our Army Aviation crews. Army efforts over the three days totaled more than 40 hours of flight time and more than 120 buckets of water drops for wildfire suppression efforts as of November 1st. Other air assets for the response included helicopters from the Army National Guard, the Division of Forestry and Wildlife, and the Honolulu Fire Department. A couple upcoming events. Veterans Day Ceremony at the National Memorial Cemetery of the Pacific. The Punch Bowl is on Saturday morning at 10:00 AM. Veterans Weekend Warrior Barbecue Championship Festival is happening tomorrow and Saturday at Fort Druisi in Waikiki. Should be lots of great tasting opportunities, be there for the scoring, live music. Should be a pretty good time. There will be a Veterans Military and First Responders Welcome Tent. Finally, the Waikiki Holiday Parade on Kalakaua Avenue. It's happening Saturday, November 25th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Any questions?
Any questions from board members?
Thank you very much.
Glad enough.
Any questions from members of the community? Any questions from members of the community online? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, see you next year.
Happy holidays, yeah, stay well.
Alright, moving on to our agenda, filling in the vacancies for Sub-District 2. Residents interested in finding vacant board members, give us a brief proof of residency to the board meeting or contact a neighborhood assistant. Is there anyone, friend, that would like to step up to the challenge and be part of the board, represent...
I didn't know about the proof of residency.
But before we get to that, if you could come up here to the front, you know, say your name, introduce yourself. That's the way you'd like to serve on the board and basically our board will know. Be the one that will change.
Okay, so hi, I'm Rebecca Carlson. I've lived here for 13 years. I'm very interested in emergency preparedness. I'm a Red Cross worker. I'm very concerned about, you know, the health and safety of our community. Sustainability is one of my big priorities. And I'm very interested in doing more. My youngest just graduated high school, so you know, I've got the time now, it's time. So thank you for... And I play in the BYU Hawaii Studio Orchestra. We're having a concert Tuesday before Thanksgiving and it's going to be amazing. Yeah, come down, I live in that area. Yep.
Questions from board members?
Welcome.
Number?
808?
Okay.
3049?
For emergency preparedness, I want to talk with you.
Okay. She's very involved and she's been to our company and has written for us, yeah.
Somebody sent a thing, I tried calling the number, it cannot get through, there's...
Oh, this is the lady you're trying to call?
What's your name again?
Rebecca. I've been on the phone in the last two weeks, so if it was the last two weeks, I might have...
It's always, yeah, never, never...
Yeah.
What's her last name?
Thousand.
Thousand.
Awesome, okay. Okay, I've been trying very hard and...
Okay, yeah, we should talk.
Yes. No questions from board members?
Okay.
Any questions? So we do have four. Stephanie's online. So Stephanie, did you have any questions for the candidate? I know your camera's not working. Testing test, can you hear us? Okay, Steph, type in the chat, go from there.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are you involved in any other community groups or organizations?
Let's see, I am the Emergency Preparedness Specialist for the Laie Hawaiian North State of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And I mentioned Red Cross, yeah? And I'm also, let's see. I'm on a committee for the Storymakers Authors Guild.
She participates in the Hotula Farmer's Market.
Oh, that's right, Hotula Farmer's Market.
And we coordinate things with terms of standing up search teams, you know?
Oh, that's right, I forgot. I'm trying to get a search team going in Laie. And so I've got, we have five people who are trained in their backpacks. And we've been having monthly meetings, but we need, I think, about 10 people to actually have a real teams. Still working on it.
Perfect, I typed to Stephanie if she had any questions in the chat. I have not yet received an answer. No, this is for a lady. Just call her on the phone.
If I could verify her residence, please, would she have a photo ID or...
Yeah, my...
I told Connie I wanted to recommend some people, we were going to be wanting the person to recommend it, but he said...
Yeah, and he gave me a call.
Yeah, and then I...
I texted you the number that was on the thing for the November, for the Fall Festival? But I didn't get it back. So I wonder if I got the number right.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, we're going to verify her, yeah, her residency and then we'll go from... You see my other texts I sent you?
Okay, great, I can verify her residence in Sub-District 2 here.
The board members, yes, we do have someone who wants to volunteer to serve in the Sub-District 2, which is Laie, is... Well, let me put this way, do we have any objections?
No reserve. Just need a nomination.
A second.
Motion in the second. Third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
And then it's a, I know it's silly, but yeah, we should carry out those.
We'll go online first. Council member, board member, am I ready? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Coming down the line?
Yes.
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 Great, congratulations.
Perfect, we will reset.
Rebecca, if you actually want to stand for this?
Yes.
And if you could just raise your right hand and repeat what you mean. I solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear.
That I will... Sorry, one more time, I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support...
That I will faithfully support...
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Hawaii.
Of the State of Hawaii.
The Charter and laws...
The Charter and laws.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And will conscientiously and impartially...
And will conscientiously and impartially...
Discharge my duties to the best of my ability.
Discharge my duties to the best of my ability.
As a member of the neighborhood board to which I've been appointed.
As a member of the neighborhood board to which I've been appointed.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more position that I need to fill. Is there anyone here in person or online that would like to step up to the plate? Person that I asked is not here either, so with that said, I guess we will move forward in the agenda and we'll put that on for January. Okay, so now we're moving to formations of committees. I've put a list here, board members of all the committees that we've had in the past. It doesn't mean we're limited to that, you can have, you can make up a committee. Boards all around the island have all kinds of different committees. So if there's anyone who would want to be a committee chair, and I can explain what that means after, but if there's anyone, any area that interests you...
I want to be the same committee I've been last two years.
Okay, what was that?
Community resilience and emergency preparedness.
Okay.
And I saw Tucy had a committee on food security.
He wouldn't even came on. I pulled up an old agenda where he wasn't, I can put it in there, so food security?
Yeah.
No problem.
I think he was in that division, I think.
Okay, the board members. Come on, somebody's got to take planning and permitting.
Sure.
Alright.
Oh, I know, professional planner, that's right.
Exactly, I'm looking at you. Anything else, anyone? Ryan?
Unless you want me in helping in the service.
You can share with every committee if you, so if you like it. Okay, well, we can see the rest open, so think about it, you don't have to decide right now. I will tell you that the NCO has really made a big push that to limit the time that the board takes because as you know, our meetings can run long with presentation because they should try to vet a lot of these things to commit. Now, as the committee chairs, you guys are responsible for all the meetings and fill your membership for your committee. What was the ratio? You had to have some board members on it, plug some good people in the public.
I would need to double check, but yeah, there are any members of the public who are more than welcome to join the committees as members. They just can't be chair, co-chair like that. And I think that typically it's really just as long as it's like, there's the one board member on, yeah? So I'll double check on that.
So basically, you guys have a committee member... So basically, you guys pick your committee members and then bring it before the board and then we will all do all that we need. I'm chair of the boards, I'm ex fact, ex officio, whatever, it's all about committees or something like that.
Yeah, so as chair, you're like, you're almost like a member of each committee just by default.
But, but a lot of stuff, we want, if it's gonna take, you know, we don't want to have our members, like we usually do, the heads planning permitting will be big. The, the cons to this is that, one, you have to schedule it here, we do not have Logan's. Assistance on this, so we would be, the committee chair would be in charge of the minutes. So you would like, if it's on, we could do a Zoom, we talked about it before, about if you folks have a Zoom account, I have a Zoom account that you could use, so it could be both. In hybrid, it could be hybrid, and then we could record that and use that as a way to draft your minutes. So it is kind of putting us out there on our own to do everything, but in the long run, it helps the board overall so that we can push things through thoroughly, vet things. That may take, you know, a long time and, you know, sometimes we have. Developmental owner that's coming in, you know, once they, once they met with the board, bam, it's it, they check the box, right? Me with the committee, that doesn't necessarily check the box, it's just the committee, it's not the full member of the board. So we can use that. For a lot of different, and this is the way just, you know. Let me chair it. This would be a great way to practice when you guys think. Okay, but if, you know, for those of you that didn't pick a board, I mean, a committee can make one, I mean, whatever, so think about it. Because a lot of, a lot of neighborhood boards, we have another neighborhood board chair here, by the way, for none of you. You guys use committees, Waina uses their committees very effectively, a lot of other boards around the state, we, the island, use their boards really effectively with the committees.
So there is committee members, they all need to be from Ko'olau Loa though, yeah?
Not necessarily, it's really.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, you want to, you want to build as an effective team again.
Okay.
Also, the way that meetings are announced are the same way that your, this meeting is announced, you basically just need to submit an agenda, a committee agenda. Around the same time as your regular meeting agenda is preferable, to keep mailing costs down, but basically. When you get your mail out with your agenda and your minutes for the regular meeting, at the back, there could also be committee agendas, there could also be committee minutes in those mailouts. And those things are all public disclosure, right? So the committee meetings need to be. They need to go through a proper discourse and, you know, let the public know for public participation.
That can work, it's, yeah, we try to time it at some point, so I usually draft, I'm drafting this agenda, submitting it last week, third, Friday.
Yeah, so the chair will always submit his agenda at least a week before, if not sooner, and so it's on the committee chairs to, you know, coordinate with the chair. Oh, we all need to get our committee agendas in by a certain date.
Because it's on our own, you don't have to necessarily use here, here's great, but.
The meeting.
Yeah, the meeting, it's just as long as it's listed public that everyone can get to. If you want.
Sure.
Okay, so I mean, with that said, we'll move on forward and we'll put this back on the agenda.
Yes, and just, yeah, just a point of clarification, I want to double check, so we have the community resilience, emergency preparedness, the food security, crime, and planning and permitting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Move on to government reports. We have, do we have Kat from the? Okay, sure.
Jeff, I ask if you'd be interested to say a few words about your work here in Honolulu.
Oh, absolutely. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm sorry for much for meeting. I'm Jeff Gavala, I am with Chief Gavala, we're a veteran-led volunteer disaster response organization. We specialize in disaster response and humanitarian operations. We help communities by leveraging the skills of veterans, first responders, active duty service members, healthcare professionals. And really anybody who wants to do good in the community. We take all those skills and empower them to serve communities prior to disasters, during disasters, and post-disaster. I've had the pleasure of working with Dadi and Huiha Ola with the Ko'olau community resilience hub site. Interestingly, our, our relationship formed because I was looking for a site to train chainsaw operators, it's one of the many specialties that we have. We do wildfire mitigation. When hurricanes happen, we go out and clear roadways. We have teams that are currently deployed to Florida right now, still helping homeowners get back into their homes after Hurricane Adalia that occurred. So I was looking for a place to train more sawyers out here in Wagon, and Dadi needed trees cut down, so it's been a long forged relationship. And actually ongoing right now, we just stood up a FEMA Type III fire mitigation operation. All of that has been funded by our donors, so this is at zero cost to the community. I met with a contractor today to assess the work that we've done, and they actually quoted us today, the work that's completed would have cost the community $292,000. It's been an honor. Oh, yeah, you'll get the report after, but it's been an honor and privilege to be able to serve the community and hold them up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, we have Kat from the mayor's office. I did not.
So Chair, you asked for, we're sending the email with the memo from the mayor's office, yeah, the, the mayor's app's not gonna be here.
Gotcha. Um, okay, moving forward to Matt Weir, other staffer.
Right here. Hi, aloha, my name is Moki Hana, on behalf of District Two Councilmember Matt Weir. I'm the community liaison for the Ko'olau Loa and Ko'olau Poco areas of our district. So some community updates. Last month, constituent Casey Connors requested help with tracking illegal vacation short-term rentals by geographical region. For this case particularly located in Ko'olau Loa. As a follow-up, I routed this request to the Department of.
Member Porgaro also passed the full council this month. The bill would add manufactured compostables such as the takeout containers we get from the restaurant. Public review and feedback now through December 1st. You can comment to the draft document via climate ready or ahu.org. Again, if you'd like to join our email list for District Two, please leave your email address in the chat. And for those here, I encourage you to sign up on our District Two email signup sheet. All right, happy to take any questions or concerns back to our office. That was a lot.
Because I just make a mention, you should know that we are hosting an open cast for the climate change.
Yes.
Uh, the next Monday. It's six thirty to eight thirty. Yeah, six thirty to eight thirty.
Six thirty to eight thirty, what is the date?
It's the thirteenth.
So November thirteenth.
Yeah, six thirty to eight thirty, climate ready ahu. And we will be having heavy hoo-hoos donated by a community member. So come, come and get your hoo-hoos.
I know.
Is climate ready ahu?
Climate ready ahu, thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
So I had a question, so at the Kahalua Neighborhood Board, Deputy Jiro was asked a question from one of the board members about the Ko'olau Ranch.
Oh, that was you, we got the email this morning, was that you today?
Yes. Yeah, so I was wondering if you folks.
So Jiro, thank you, we did get your email, I was actually there with council member. So yes, we did get your email and Jiro had already confirmed yesterday that he was routing it. Okay, so he did take in your request, sorry for the confusion.
Oh, no worry, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the members of the public? I know. Have it. Okay, we'll go to online. Please, yes, please proceed with your question.
Yeah. Sorry, couldn't hear anything about the illegal vacation rentals and if you had able to solve that or not, because.
I can reiterate, can you hear me, Casey?
Just quickly.
Yep, so I was just saying a follow-up that I routed your request to the Department of Planning and Permitting, and I'll let you know once I get a follow-up from them.
Okay, and there are. The other question is, do you know what's happening with the proposed film studio? We know that there was a bill and it might have gotten stalled in the budget committee, we have a lot of. Both union and non-union people who work in film and TV, and since the strike just ended, we're so happy they will get back and. Get into these higher paying jobs.
Can I, can I ask you to write your, would you be willing to write your concern in a chat and then I can get it from, I can get it from our members here? Regarding the film?
Yep.
Is that okay?
It's, it's in the chat.
Thank you, Casey. Oh, yes, okay, great, thank you.
No worries.
Any other questions from members of the public online? All right, Karen and CNN, thank you very much, see you in January. Okay, moving forward, do we have a representative from Congress from the Giltakula's office? Okay. Do not see anyone online, so you will look through the message first and on the list, you will go down to Governor, Representative Cristal. Mia, I believe I got a text from her, correct? But they will submit it, I think, to you.
I can definitely, I'll distribute the news lines.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Senator Britton's online.
Hi, everyone, aloha. I'm so happy to be with you guys in person, Samantha Decore with Senator Britton Awah. We've been working in the district a lot lately, so I figure, you know, I want to come in person, I want to be here, I'm very much a face-to-face kind of a person. But a couple are updates with regard to the Ho'ola Resilience Hub, Senator Awah and board member, oh, first. Hi Chair. Board members and welcome, newest board member. Dadi and board member Dadi and Senator Awah had done an interview. With regards to a different access road that the community has been contacting our office on with regards to Drum Road. So just a little update with that, the Army is willing to come to the table and have some sort of discussion. There's a few areas on what's happening with the holdup of being able to at least use it as an emergency access. Just a couple of things, I won't bore you with the details, but basically there's five different owners. So everybody pretty much has to come together, the, the Army does manage it and it will take a lot of funding, so there's gonna be a lot of moving parts to this piece. But the Army is willing to come to the table, they're forming a tour in December as soon as I know what that is, I don't know what's gonna be the limit. But it's probably gonna be first proposed to the chairs and just depending on maybe an additional board member. Because we do have other boards that really are inclusive to be able to benefit from Drum Road. So be prepared to get a email from us with regards to December and what that tour is gonna look like and see where the Army is at. So I invite you to come as soon as we have that information. Second of all, with the Resiliency Hub, in addition to providing us not just another access road. But, you know, an ability to be able to stay here in the event of an emergency, in the event of a disaster. And of course, with the Resiliency Hub, Senator Awah is gonna be making that his number one priority this legislative session when it comes to GIA funds. We proposed it last year, we didn't get it, but we're gonna propose it again, and so he's gonna be making that his top priority. And then there have been a few, well, more than a few, of raised crosswalk or speed hump requests from Ko'olau Loa. So I spoke with the deputy director, Robert Shishiro, a few days ago, and they are gonna be making their final assessments next month in December time. So I think I'll be able to have a little bit more concrete answers for you, I apologize, but I'm happy with the fact that we don't have an answer yet. The raised crosswalk or speed hump on Camp Highway between Ho'olapu Beach Park and 711, I asked that back in August. We asked for one near Kuhuku Elementary back in April, so we're really pushing them to make sure that they prioritize what has come first. Like, you know, what has come first as far as the request. And then also, Senator Awah is doing a food tree planting project, I know this is not necessarily our district. But out in Kahalua, they got the green light from the Department of Transportation. This past weekend, they were able to clear about two-thirds of that land, it's about a quarter mile stretch right along Kaikili Highway before the hygienic store. And so we went through the permitting process, we checked all the boxes, DOT gave us the green light. And this past Saturday, they cleared a good amount, they're gonna go back in this Saturday, so if anybody has machines, excavators, skidsters, spackle. We invite you to come and be with us to help us complete the clearing of the land. And then December 16th is when our planting is gonna be taking place, we're gonna be planting 35 lulu trees and 35 mountain apple trees. So we invite you to come be with us if you're able to, this is really a community-initiated project and. No monies, everything is being contributed, people are coming to donate their time, all of the plants are being contributed, all the soil and all those kinds of things. So we invite you to stay with us, hopefully, we're hoping that this will be the first of many projects to come in Senator Awah's district. But that really is his vision, is to utilize these unused lands, especially on government lands, to plant food trees. And this is one, the first of food, food tree planting project on government lands that actually got the thumbs up from the government. So we're very proud of that, and Senator Awah is gonna be using that to work his way throughout the district, so. Other than that, that's all I have for tonight, so if you folks have any questions.
We also met Senator in the group, and we asked for, to be able to do a tree planting project here as well. And there may be other communities that want to be one as well. So I, I actually. Attended the mayor's everyday festival, I was invited to go there, Connie was there, and we went, yes, is it yesterday? And, yeah. And, and I, the Parks and Rec director was there and I happened to be talking to her and I said, oh. Are any of the trees gonna be food trees? And they don't want food trees in Parks, and so I'm hoping, I know that's a mistake, but you're sitting. Maybe we can start looking at that, because we know in a disaster, those food trees are gonna be so important. The main reason Phelan did not want food trees is she says people fight over the food. Why? Food, we shouldn't be fighting over food, whoever. He helps and gets involved with taking care of the trees and, and in the community, anybody that needs food should be able to take them, you know? And so I can't see that as being a really good reason, because I think a community can make their own rules and implement them. And people will be happy, you know, we have a free food pantry here, we don't tell people, no, 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 you can't take that, you know? So I think it's very important for us to have food security implemented across everything, you know, we need it.
Any other questions from board members? Questions from the public? Okay, that's all of online, questions from members of the community online. Ella has a question. Ella has a question. Sorry.
What was it? Ella? Casey?
It's from Ella. It's about renewing your permit for the church in Kohala.
Oh, break that down.
Yes.
Okay, I'll break that down to take it back. Thank you.
But any other questions for members of the public online? I see your hands up, but I don't know if that's from before.
Yeah, no, no, of course. Thank you so much. Senator Awah is on the Human Services Committee and I want to make sure that he understands that since we don't meet in December, the annual homeless count is in January. And last year, they told us from Kahaloo all the way to Turtle Bay, we only had 54 homeless. And that affects the money and the services we get. So it's every year, they have an annual homeless count. And we'd like him to be aware of that. And in years past, we have had volunteers trained, community volunteers, who helped. And before COVID, we thought we had 350 homeless. And we, we actually counted when we had volunteers and we actually did real surveys. And we found maybe over 80% were Hawaiian, which is another important factor. When you're not doing surveys, you don't know that, actual surveys. So we, I'd love him to look into the homeless count and be prepared, because we have no meeting in December and how can the community help? And the second thing is he, before he did the poignant video on Airbnbs in Laiea, and if that's possible for him to again look into, how we can shut them down? The, the ones that are full houses and full apartments? And they're not paying their taxes. That's another thing that we're very surprised that the state is not going after, because they're not paying their tax and they're not paying their TAT, transient vacation tax also. Thank you. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yeah, I got it all. Thanks, thanks Ella. So I'll mention that to Senator Awah when session starts and we have our committee hearings again. And then with regards to the Airbnb, we'll see what we can do to work with Councilmember Wire's office and see how we can collaborate on something on the state side, so.
Mahalo, because the state is losing all this income from the tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make a comment on what she brought up, which is the homeless count. Julio Ha'ula is a member of the PIC, which, which
Right, no, it's Karen.
Yeah, and we, I called last year as one account to find out who was doing the count in Koholaua, because we were going to volunteer to do that. Out of Ha'ula. But I found out that Health Harm Reduction Center was signed up to do all the count. And they, they are a really a great group to be doing that, because they come out to our area at least once a week. And they provide medical services and help out people who are homeless, who are really in need. But the other thing is, I'll get ahold of them again this year. Since we have opened our food pantry here, we have a lot of houses, people that come here for food. Every, almost every time we have the pantry open, they come in and we have a huge group. And so we probably serve 200 people a month who need food, just out of the food pantry. So I think that's a good way of finding homeless people who maybe you don't find routinely because they're living in parks and under bridges and it really hard to find.
Yeah, yeah, and I will say that. Well, 54 does sound very low. But then in addition to that, it's so hard to keep track of those numbers, because you know, they're moving locations or maybe they're not there at the time. So I think about the 200-ish type number, like, sound a little bit
Well, we're not for everybody that comes to the food pantry.
Yes, yes.
It's not all high people.
Right.
So, so, we know that even people tell us we're homeless.
Yeah, and, and it's interesting, because partners
In Karen.
Yes, they actually came to our office today. They're having a grand opening, or they're having an open house on the 16th, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Okay, very good. And thank you. And I noted that to the Health Harm Reduction Center. Thank you.
All right, any other questions from members here online? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'm going to head it back to the west side. I have a nice drive. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, Merry Christmas. We'll not see you.
Happy summer days. Take care.
If we move in on from Representative Member Sean. I believe I saw you online earlier. Please proceed.
Oh, I'm sorry, you guys. I have a, I have a backup singer in the background. Maxim, daddy's got to work now. Please be quiet. Hi. Aloha, good evening. As I mentioned last time, you know, my major focus this year as the Chair of Tourism is to get ahold of short term rentals. I want to give the counties the power to amortize, essentially, to take away the entire Okay, I'm going to go to another room. Give me one second. All right, sorry about that, everyone. So the most important thing that I'm going to do this year as the Chair of the Tourism Committee is to make explicit that the counties have the power to regulate short term rentals. This is a moral imperative. And you know what? Listen, it's not going to solve the housing crisis, but we have to do it anyway. The other thing I want to talk to you guys about is my other big initiative is to control county parks, to control the parking, to make them reservation only. And I think that we have to create space for our local residents at all of our county parks. Let's look at, I mean, for example, like Laniakea, Shar's Cove, Waimea. When was the last time you guys could go there any time of the day and get a parking spot? You can't. So a big focus of me for this year is to work with the counties to create more reservation parks, so that local people have first read refusal and that we're the ones that can actually enjoy the parks that we pay for. And that's, that's, the other thing that I've been working on is the sad thing is, a lot of our time is being taken up by what happened in Lahaina. That's going to be a huge focus of the legislature for next session. And when we're talking about Lahaina, we're also talking about fire safety for all of us, because the discussions that come out of the Lahaina situation are going to inform how the entire state deals with fire. I know that the Fire Council has asked us to provide them with six or eight more helicopters for next year. I, I hope that we can do that. In fact, this is kind of scary, but a few days ago, I was at home in Haleiwa and I saw smoke out my window. And I went down to the Wailea Community Association and there was a raging brush fire. And if there hadn't been all the helicopters in the air from the Mililani Malka fire already, I'm not sure my house would have survived, quite frankly, because it took about, and, and this is, you know, our HFD guys are the best. They got there as fast as they could, but it was probably 15 minutes before they got there. And in those 15 minutes, the helicopters probably made four or five drops. And without those drops, the fire would have crossed Kamamea and then my house was next. So this is something that we really all need to be aware of. And this is the new normal and the new reality. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much for your help. This is Lorraine from Honolulu and I appreciate your help, you and Sunshine, in reaching out to Haima about our siren that has not worked in a year and a half. However, the response was that we would be on the agenda for April of 2024. I must tell you, that's a little disconcerting. That leaves us two and a half years with no siren. And especially when we are in a drought season, I, I'm, I'm just a little concerned that it shouldn't be a little bit more of a priority.
I saw that email. I, I was, I didn't respond right away, because I don't, I don't, sometimes I get frustrated too. So I don't want to like blast off an email to you guys being like, what the, gosh darn. But that's, their answer was unacceptable. Bottom line.
That's the way I
Unacceptable. And again, you know, three, four days ago, I'm sitting a few hundred yards from my house, watching HFD fight a fire and praying that it doesn't cross the road. So this is something that we're going to try and address in the next legislative session. And it, this goes into so many issues, right? It's not just the sirens, it's also the cellphone network, it's also our electrical grid. I was very happy that, once I saw that HFD had controlled the fire, you know, I walked back like 10 minutes to my house and I had no power. And I was so happy that I had no power and asked my neighbors, "You guys have power?" No, no power. That means that Kiko de-energized the grid. So we're, we're all in this like most awful experiment together. You will, you can expect to see out of us next year, a bunch of legislation dealing with fire, whether it's creation of a state fire marshal that has the power to sound sirens, but also has expertise in wildfires, not just somebody that was hired for emergency management. I know that, like, I don't want to second guess the Maui Emergency Manager, but I guess I will. I, I don't agree with the decisions that were made. That, that was insane. So we have to change everything about the way that we deal with our natural environment and making sure that the poles that contain the sirens and the emergency alerts have backups, have battery backups or solar backups is absolutely critical, because we can't rely on the grid and we can't rely on the cellphone network. So where does that leave us? So that, that's going to be a huge focus for us next year.
Thank you. So anything that you can do, I appreciate it very much in getting this siren fixed, hopefully before April. That, that is a bit distressing to think that we will go through a very dry rainy season without any emergency.
I, I'm not sure why it would take that long, but I will do my best to find out and speed it up.
Oh, thank you.
I have a question. What do you mean, Sean, when you say reservations in the park?
Well, um, let me give you an example. So there's this state park on the north shore of Kauai called Hana. And it's the beginning of the Napa Coast hike, right? So for years, from Hanalei to Hana, there's all these people parking on the side of the road and it's just, it's just kind of a little bit messy. The local residents aren't happy. So they got in touch with state parks and the local residents formed a nonprofit to create a shuttle service. So now, if you're a non-resident, again, I want to emphasize, if you are not a local person and you're here as a tourist, if you want to go to a Hana State Park, you have to make a reservation to hop on a shuttle. You park your car a mile or so away, then you get on the shuttle, the shuttle takes you over to Hana. But what that means is that all the parking spots at Hana are, are for, are for us. That, that we can go, like, let's just say, you know, Saturday morning, I want to take the kids to Hana. You can go, there's a spot, you don't, so for, for us, Saturday morning, some of the, on the other side of my district, the north shore side, a lot of those places by nine, 10 o'clock, they're totally full. The parking lot is full. So we pay all these taxes. These taxes go to maintaining these city parks and we can't even use them, because they're full of tourists. So why shouldn't we create reservation system to say, if you are a non-resident, if you don't have a Hawaii state driver's license, please use our mobile app, make a reservation, and if there aren't any spots, maybe you should go somewhere else. This is really all about us taking back control of our local communities and enjoying the resources that our taxes paid for.
So visitors from the UU park can get reservations at the park? And locals not? Is that right?
Um, it would be on a case by case basis. You know, the first trial was with state parks. It's, oh, sorry, you broke up for a sec.
I said, do you mean? Yeah. Do you mean, or, or, you say case by case? Do you mean, it will be treated differently? What do you thought?
Well, I think it would depend on every single park. There are some parks, there are some county parks and some state parks on our island that nobody ever goes to, or that you can always get a parking spot at. And then there are some parks that have become absolute hotspots. And for a local person, you'd have to get up very early in the morning to get a, to get a parking spot there and to enjoy the public resource that is our right. So we're trying to make the balance between the revenues that we derive from tourism and the needs of our local community. And, and I've always felt very strongly that we should come first.
Um, I had a quick comment, if possible. I'm just wanting to say that I'm familiar with the process that they use at Hana State Park. And I worked with some of the community groups up there and know that it's had a really positive impact for all the folks who are up there that had previously didn't have access to the state park over there. And I'm also familiar with kind of the reservation system that they use at Diamond Head as well. It's a little different. That one is less about giving priority or creating space for local residents and more about just managing the limited parking space that they have there. But I think the reservation system is definitely a good way to kind of regulate the parking and create space for local residents. And I also, as someone who lives up on this side, you know, during the off season, there used to kind of be an off season for visitors. When it's pouring rain, you can go to Waimea Beach Park and get parking and you can go to Sunset and have parking. And then the rest of the time, you cannot. And it used to be, if you got there before nine, then you could park. And now it's, if you get there after 7:30, and if there's an event at Waimea, you got to get there the night before. I don't know, when they open the gates. So I think that's definitely something that would serve the residents who live here and something that I'm very supportive of. So mahalo to you for chasing down that avenue and trying to create that space.
Any other questions? Okay, here in C and M, thank you very much. We'll see you next year.
Merry Christmas. Merry Kiki Makau.
Wait a minute.
Uh-oh, wait a minute.
Sorry, my apologies. Casey had her hand up. Casey?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm back.
Of course. So are, have you been, the, the chairmanships are all, the committees are all selected now? You're definitely Chair?
Sorry, my, my dog and my kid are screaming. Can you say that again?
All the committees have been selected now for the House?
Well, they were selected last year in the beginning of the biennium.
Okay, so they're not going to change?
Unless somebody leaves, Representative Hashimoto has left and so we'll have to find a new Housing Chair.
So are you going to be working on for the tourism, restructuring HTA, the green fee or a carrying capacity study? And then again, those, those are the things they brought forth before and we want to know if we need to help support them. And again, you're on the Economic Committee and one of the problems in Maui we saw was that really low income jobs with tourism. Any help with promoting higher income jobs? And I don't have to say anymore, because I've always talked you to death on that.
That was a lot of questions. In the interest of time, I will just say that we continue to work on all those issues.
Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes the government reports. I'm moving on to the presentation. We have Mauna Kea Highway, Aka'ava Erosion Mitigation Plan. Donnie, did we get anybody to present on this? Okay, so I guess with that in mind, there is a link there for everyone else to review that. There's some comments. That's what they're looking for right now. They can do that. Um.
Didn't she come to one of our neighborhood? Any words? Yeah. Is she the one that comes to Honolulu? She's coming to the Honolulu one on Tuesday night. Oh.
So if you want to go on Tuesday nights.
Does the board, um, ever submit comments like as a board?
Yeah, we should.
Or, okay.
We can, um, but the resolution?
So you guys could take it whatever party you want. You could do a letter, you could do a strong word of email, but anything you want to do like as an entity, like the board is sending something to an office or a representative or whatever it is, you guys should pass a motion to.
Yeah, should we review the letter?
Yeah, that way, that way it reflects the views of the board, right? It's not just one person drafting it and saying, oh, I'm a member of this board. This is how we view it now. So you guys should bring it before the board before sending anything at all.
I had some comments on it. Um, do we have time for that now or do we need?
Um, yeah, um, what we would need, we need to write, should we write another?
What exactly?
In other words, if she's gonna, it's not on the agenda, but if we did.
Oh, this isn't about the Mauna Kea Highway?
If we want to write comments, tell the board.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's within, yeah, as long as it's within the purview of the presentation, I mean, I don't see.
But to roll the letter and to do that, that's not on the agenda. We would, you can vote here, gay and comments, but we're talking about writing and submitting something.
Yeah. I would recommend waiting till.
Can we do it after the fact? In other words, can we just talk about the comments now? And say, yeah, we want to write that and then draft the letter.
So we'd like to vote until January.
Yeah, so that's what we would vote now and draft the letter after the fact. Submit it to everyone and then would that work as a process?
So, so you're saying that you vote to write a letter now and then?
Yeah, with the comments that she has to lay out for all of us. So and then once that's laid out, say, okay, the letter will contain X, Y, and Z. Absolutely know what it is. And then we'll just draft it after the fact. We say, okay, we approve it now. Draft the letter, then sign something up that way.
My recommendation, I, I mean, I, I see what you're saying. That way it kind of like, once you guys meet, then you're kind of able to just do it. But just go on a different way about it. Our recommendation would be to have your comments about it now. If there's a clear opinion about the board, I would recommend one of the board members to take it upon himself to draft something with the comments that are reflected here. And then bring that letter, email, whatever.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting. And then take a look at it prior and then adopt it right there.
What's the comment? Please, we know we don't have anything.
Typically, the comment period is only 30. Usually they include 30 days.
30 days.
So I don't imagine that it would run into January. True. Well, the other alternative would be that we could just give individual comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we go in, that isn't that kind of just giving individual comments, right? On the, as we go in and enter.
Okay.
Yes, if we do it on some board, I represent all of I would want to get the manao of Ta'ava. Yeah. But so I, I highly recommend that we just provide comments right now.
They've already submitted.
Yes.
Comments, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have. Um, I just wanted to mention just a couple of things to look at when we folks are reviewing it. Um, so one of the things that popped out to me was that typically when you have a CDWA, which is a conservation district use uh, application for a permit that is at the state level and goes through Office of Conservation and Postal Lands. Um, a part of that, you'll have the environmental assessment. And then a part of the environmental assessment, you'll have all the technical studies. And so in my review of the CDWA and the EA and the technical studies, most of the information was actually found in the environmental assessment and not all included to the same level in the CDWA. And that's uncommon, I think, for the professional standard. So that's just something to keep in mind. You read the CDWA, it's very thin. And it doesn't include, doesn't have a lot of pictures, just all the way at the very end. Because when I was first looking at it, I was trying to figure out from the narrative where it was located and I had to flip all the way to the very back to be able to see pictures. And I kind of understood, but then when I looked at the environmental assessment, it has all of those details. So I find that really interesting because the CDWA is actually the primary document. And so the EA is an important document and should be, you know, like fully independent. But the CDWA should actually act as an independent document. So I found that really interesting that it seemed almost like an afterthought, the way that it was put together. Um, the other concern, I think OCCL was solicited to provide comments on the CDWA and the environmental assessment. I thought it was really interesting. They had a whole list of comments and those can be found in the appendices for the environmental assessment. Um, and one of the comments that they brought up was the fact that hard armoring um, is typically something that's not allowed for private landowners. Um, and therefore it's frowned upon for the public or for the public entities to also utilize that just because of equity amongst private landowners. We don't allow them to do that. And so the public should also think about that. I think the justification from the consultants and from the DOT on that particular point talked about how, um, it was more of a urgent need to preserve the road and preserve that space. And that's why they were looking at a hard armoring option as opposed to other types of options, like, um, soft armoring options or other types of technology. So I thought that was interesting. The sand will move. It will be dynamic sand shoreline as it always is, but there were no studies um, and no additional research looking in what's actually going to happen to the sand along that revetment site. So that's something that I think, uh, will affect the community and something that folks should be aware of. The other big question that OCCL asked specifically is this particular project, the revetment that's being proposed, has a 25-year lifetime. And usually when you have, um, if the public, if a public entity is gonna use hard armoring to protect our shoreline, typically you want to have a longer lifetime, for like a 50-year lifetime, just because of the cost, um, the impact, the amount of time it will take. Um, you know, that's our primary road that everybody goes through. Um, if they're going up and down the coastline. So, um, imagine that will be quite a long time where that uh, lane will likely be closed. We might have to detour or contraflow. So just because of all of those potential impacts, usually you want to have a longer lifetime than just 25 years. So I don't know that additional options were really considered. It wasn't lengthy in the alternatives. Usually in the environmental assessment, you'll have the primary, the proposed alternative, additional alternatives, and then no action alternative. So just in my kind of quick review of all of those documents, I thought those are kind of highlighted things that, that folks should think about um, when proposing any comments. I won't say that I'm against the revetment or I'm also not a coastal engineer, so I wouldn't know what is the particular best option. But from a planning perspective, it was difficult to look, see what other options might be available. Um, yeah, so it's, it's a difficult situation because it's so critical that we protect that infrastructure, but also just things to think about when reviewing the documents.
Who did this, who did this part up?
Sea engineer, or yes, sea engineering.
They continue, continue.
Yeah.
They're not even listening.
Um, I'm not sure. I know, I, you know, it was likely, uh, um, like subconsultants that were. So. Yeah. So they're coastal engineers and sea engineers. Um, I don't know if they like had a subconsultant together, the planning and permitting documents. It's, it's hard to tell that unless you're able to ask them specifically. They'll be like one contract and then maybe some consultants that work on the different pieces.
They will be contacted, that's not supposed to be the whole, but it's not like they will have it and they're going to be working on 25 feet of permits. And like Laura said, this, the design lifespan is 25 years. We're doing this for short-term to mentor.
They're abandoned.
Yeah. So there's no significant improvements are being proposed.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's cost estimated to the only, it's the only, uh, access road. And so those conversations with the town hall, yeah, those need to be. So yeah, this is a fix. This is a short, short midterm solution.
This was discussed. Yes, and everybody was not happy.
I, I, yeah, it will have a, a big impact, especially on all of our Ohana that live in Ka'ava. That would be, they'll be taking the brunt of the impact there.
Those are really good things that you, yes, very, very good.
Comments from the community?
Now we're all taken aback and really.
Yes, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying. I swear the links were there, please. But you know. And with that, um, well, let's see, any comments from people online that, that would like to comment on this, the discussion we've had? Andrea, see your hand up, go ahead.
She is, ma'am.
Okay. I'm calling about the statewide coastal highways, uh, study report from 2019 that was finished. And, uh, this person that's talking, I wanted to know who she is and have they looked at that closely because it's got the top 20 sites in the state of Hawaii and, uh, 10 of in the top 10, we have seven, four directly in Ka'ava and another one, you know, leading right near, but nearby in Ha'ula. So, and they, they break it down mile by mile in that study that took years to do and it is something that you should refer to. You haven't, uh, that says it specifically where to harden and where to relocate parts of a highway. So that's one thing. I just want to know if this, if you've been informed with that study or have you folks ignored that study in this particular uh, look, looking at that repair job for 400 and something feet. It's just 400 and something linear feet. And it needs to be done. It should have been done already, but you know, seems to be a lot of, uh, pussywussy going on over here at this point that you're talking about. So do you know that high, do you know that study report, the state of Hawaii coastal highways report? Final in 2019?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Lily Maka'ila. I'm representative for Sub District One.
Hold it up again because that looks not long enough to do anything. Or can you put your name and contact in the chat? How's that?
Yeah, honey, honey, can you do that for me? Um, I'm the Sub District One representative on the neighborhood board. And I was just sharing my thoughts in review of the CDWA application, the EA and the technical studies. I am familiar with the document that you discussed as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, yeah. Lily, Lily dot Maka'ila.
Okay, any other questions from members of the public online? Okay, here it is. See, and now we'll move forward. On the agenda today for a while of the minutes, written summary for the record reported for Thursday, October 12th, 2023. Members, do you have any changes, additions, fractions? I'm going to make you approve. We have a second. The objections? Drop. Okay. Um, let's see, uh, I, we didn't, we didn't put community announcements in.
Uh, it's, it's script to share, so.
Let's go to community announcements.
I found some. Okay, um, Dottie in Ha'ula and November 18th, Saturday, Ha'ula Farmers Market is having a fall festival from 12 to 4. There'll be music, hula, um, hay rides for the kids, a lot of fun. So it's a very special festival. It's our first one. And there's no charge. And, uh, if anyone who is a bender in this area, you're welcome to come and bend. So just give me a call, 808-255-6944. We'd love to have you. Uh, the second thing is, uh, we're finishing up a SERC training. And, uh, we're also trying to stand up SERC teams of about 10 people per team here in Ha'ula. We're hoping that all of the communities will do likewise. And, uh, we're finishing up this Saturday and going to Diamond Head. Uh, and hopefully that will bring us Team Two. Uh, we have one team now. We need survivors. So if anybody wants to go up to Diamond Head that day and just act as a survivor, it's a lot of fun. So, uh, but it starts at 7:30 in the morning. You have to be there by 7:00 AM to get in. So give me a call. You got my phone number. Uh, if you want to go to Diamond Head, I can send you the map and that's just a morning thing. Uh, it's a drill. Uh, you will be a survivor and saved from, um, a building collapsing or whatever. So the, the next announcement is Team Rubicon, and I just wanted to say, um, they've been here a week. They've been coming for eight months. They made dramatic changes in the site where the resilience hub will be built. And so I invite you to drive by, but I don't recommend you walk the trail up on the hillside yet. Uh, there will be a lot more work going on this weekend. We're going to put signs up to ask people not to go up on the hillside yet. It's just not safe. And, um, people will be felling trees during the day. And there's a lot of work to be done on the site still, but you can go into the big field. So, but please stay away from the hillside. Uh, the last announcement is November 13th. It's climate ready. I already mentioned that. And then that's, uh, from 6:30 to 8:30 here. And they want your input on the climate ready actions they're going to take for the city of county of Honolulu. And then we have a sick festival coming up December 2nd, Saturday, 12 to 5. That's a Mili Kaliki Maka Festival. And we have the marine bands from Honolulu are coming out along with other musical groups.
And Stanton?
And Stanton's coming too. Yes, Stanton is going to be there. He promised me. So, um, please come out on December 2nd and enjoy from, uh, 12 to 5. Thank you.
Any other announcements? I do have one. If everyone could go to the county website to look up Bill 57. Um, that is a game room bill.
Oh, yeah.
So take a look at that. Um, it is currently up for secondary in this month. Um, the committee here is unable to second. And so I'm, um, that far as office is pushed out. If it does survive that, then it'll be on to back to the reason for third, so the odds of it possibly be able to hire. But take a look at that. I know Ken and I had a long discussion issue. They were, uh, council of the Chipotle. Um, I know Ken and I had a long discussion issue, they were, uh, council of the people on their fundraising. So I'll take a look at that, that was 57. All right, do we have any, um? Yes, I think, Andrea, do you have any questions or any announcements? Anyone online have any announcements? Okay, here it is, see, and none, we will move on with. Done with the minutes, so board announcements, the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 11th, 2024. At 6:30 PM here, over at Community Center, uh, we will be in business for December 2023. With that, the reading was adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.